We're going to call this meeting of House Veterans Affairs an emergency. Prepare in this committee to order. Rep. Banta, would you please lead us in the pledge? Jamie, please call the roll.
Chairman Solomon.
Here.
Representative Barowski on leave. Representative Brown on leave.
Uh, Rep. Barowski is online.
Oh, she's online?
Yes.
Representative Dougherty. Representative Gens. Representative Haddock on leave. Representative Ingalls on leave. Representative Monroe on leave. Representative O'Mara on leave. Representative Piele. Representative Sappi on leave. Representative Scott on leave. Representative Takeak on leave. Representative Webster on leave. Chairman Gillan. Representative Banta. Representative Bashline. Representative Cooper. Representative Hamm. Representative Kerwin.
Uh, Representative Hamm's online.
He's online. Representative Kerwin. Representative Crouppa. Representative Major. Representative Rigby. Representative Stender. Representative Watrow. Representative Williams.
I'm here.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Jamie. Today, we're having a hearing on House Bill 1257, Printer's Number 1382, authored by Representative Probst. So what we're going to do is we have five testifiers. We're going to begin with you, Representative, and then we're going to go to the other four. Everyone will present their testimony for members. Please hold your questions and comments till the end. Representative Probst, with your comments, please. We've been joined by Representative Watrow.
So, okay. Good morning, members of the House Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee. Thank you for convening this public hearing on House Bill 1257 and for inviting me to testify to the need of this, for this legislation. And I want to thank all of you for your service, knowing that I'm the proud sister of two United States Air Force veterans. My two stepsons are in the Army National Guard, and my future daughter-in-law is in the United States Air Force. So, thank you. Pennsylvania is home to nearly 700,000 veterans. In my district in Monroe and Pike Counties, I have the privilege of interacting with thousands of those veterans. I'm constantly awed by their stories and sacrifice, and far too often shocked and enraged by the difficulties they face navigating the complex web of the VA healthcare system and the barriers they encounter seeking benefits and resources that should be readily available to them. When I meet with veterans, one of the programs that comes up most frequently is the Disabled Veterans Real Estate Tax Program. This is one of the most important benefits we offer to some of the veterans who have broken their bodies for our country. Those who qualify are granted an exemption from the real estate taxes, which is both a significant financial relief and an appropriate show of respect to folks who have already paid so much in support and defense of our country. Unfortunately, eligibility for this program is incredibly strict. Of the 700,000 Pennsylvania veterans, only 23,000 are able to take advantage of this tax exemption today. That is because to qualify, a veteran must be rated 100% disabled by the federal VA, must have served in direct combat, and must meet a constitutionally mandated level of financial need. This means that a veteran with 90% disability rating has no chance at tax relief in Pennsylvania. A veteran who was injured in training or while deployed in a so-called "time of peace", no tax relief. If an eligible veteran moves into a long-term care facility, his or her spouse may not continue to qualify for the tax exemption on the home that they made together. And if a member of the military is killed, captured, or goes missing in action, the surviving spouse cannot take advantage of the tax exemption because the soldier wasn't rated by the VA. I can recall for you just a few people that I've spoken with and to tell them how I couldn't help. I know one man who has a 100% disability rating but was not injured in combat. His wife, also a veteran, and she served in Operation Desert Storm in Iraq and received a 90% disability rating. That couple who gave so much qualifies for no relief, nothing. I know another man who served and is legally blind, but legally blind is not enough to qualify for a 100% disability rating, and that means no tax relief in Pennsylvania. And by the way, he has since lost his home. These interactions break my heart and frankly make me incredibly angry. I refuse to continue telling these veterans that there is nothing I can do for them. That is why I'm sponsoring House Bill 1257, and I hope you will all join me in pushing this proposal forward quickly to get relief to those who have put it all on the line in defense for the rights, for our rights and freedoms. Pennsylvania's Constitution requires equal taxation. The voters of this Commonwealth have rightly exempted disabled veterans from that clause, but as I have said, the exemption is far too narrow. House Bill 1257 is a joint resolution to amend the Constitution to ensure we are properly recognizing the sacrifices and the repercussions of those sacrifices by those who have worn the uniform of our nation and our Commonwealth. House Bill 1257 streamlines the current language of the Constitution while maintaining the policy that a veteran with 100% disability rating or its equivalent can be exempted from the payment of all real property taxes. The bill removes the requirement that a veteran must have served in a war or armed conflict and expands eligibility to those who served in the National Guard and Reserves. It shifts the determination of financial need out of the Constitution, allowing the provisions of our consolidated statutes, specifically Title 51, to guide the determination. This will give us the flexibility to adapt this financial need provision more nimbly without needing to amend the Constitution further and to tailor it to different geographic needs and economic realities across Pennsylvania. This bill expands eligibility to the unmarried surviving spouse of service members who died in the line of duty, were taken prisoner of war, or went missing in action. By simplifying the constitutional restrictions on the program, House Bill 1257 allows the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs to ensure, through the regulations that it is currently rewriting, that the spouse of a veteran who has moved into long-term care will not have to fear that he or she will suddenly receive a brand-new property tax bill for thousands of dollars each year. And a key provision of House Bill 1257 permits a political subdivision, that is, a county, a municipality, or a school district to exempt a veteran with disability rating below 100% from any portion of real property taxes. This is so important because there are more than 120,000 disabled veterans in Pennsylvania, including that 90% disabled Gulf War vet and that legally blind man I mentioned earlier who cannot get 100% rating and cannot access tax relief. Of course, any tax relief costs the government money. You will find no bigger advocate for public education than me. I'm extremely mindful of the need to properly fund our schools, and as a former mayor, I know how important property tax revenue is to the budgets of our municipalities, including our counties. That is why I believe this optional proportional exemption strikes the right public policy balance. It allows a school district or a town or a county to assess its capacity to fund essential services and make its own determination about how much tax relief it can afford to offer. Those of you who know me know that I lead with my heart and tell you what I think. I think we are not doing enough for our veterans, especially our disabled veterans, and I think House Bill 1257 is the least we can do to provide relief and show appreciation to those men and women and to make Pennsylvania a place where veterans want and can afford to live. By removing unnecessary barriers and securing benefits for surviving spouses, we can provide much-needed financial relief to those who have already sacrificed so much. Additionally, by reserving certain guidelines in statute rather than in the Constitution, we ensure that future adjustments can be made more efficiently as veterans' needs change over time. Our veterans and our families have given everything in service to our country. It's our responsibility to support them. House Bill 1257 is a vital step in expanding access to property tax relief and ensuring no deserving veteran or surviving spouses left behind. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this bill and this critical issue today. Please join me in supporting this important legislation to honor and assist Pennsylvania's disabled veterans. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Representative. We're joined by Representative Haddock, Representative Webster, and Representative Stender. And Representative Stats, thank you just for being here today. Thank you so much. Next up is Mr. Nick Taylor, Chair of the Pennsylvania State Veterans Commission. Mr. Taylor, if you could please come up and provide your testimony.
There we go, okay. Good morning, Chairman Solomon, Chairman Gillan, and members of the committee. My name is Nicholas Taylor, please call me Nick, and I'm proud and honored to serve as the Chairman of the Pennsylvania State Veterans Commission, a post that I had been elected to since October of 2021. The Pennsylvania State Veterans Commission serves as one of the Commonwealth's key advisory bodies on Veterans Affairs, providing advice to the Governor, Adjutant General, and the Department of Military Affairs on policies, programs, and legislation affecting veterans and their families. The Commission is composed of representatives from major veteran service organizations like the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign War, the Disabled American Veterans, Catholic War Veterans, the Jewish War Veterans, which by the way is the oldest veteran service organization in the United States, and other statewide organizations, as well as four veteran members-at-large appointed by the Governor. This diverse body ensures that Pennsylvania's veterans, that the Pennsylvania veterans community has a strong unified voice in shaping state-level support and services. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and thank the Chairs and the members of the committee for the invitation to provide testimony. Today, my remarks will focus on the Disabled Veterans Real Estate Tax Exemption, specifically House Bill 1257, which proposes an amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to modernize and expand eligibility for this important benefit. As you may know, the current program provides a real estate tax exemption for veterans who meet the following criteria: Must be a citizen and resident of the Commonwealth. Must be honorably discharged from the Armed Forces of the United States. Must have served during a period of war or armed conflict as defined in Title 38 of U.S. Code of Federal Regulations. Must be a veteran who, as a result of their military service, is blind, paraplegic, has undergone double or quadruple amputation, or has been determined by the United States Department of Veterans Affairs or its successor to have a 100% permanent and total service-connected disability as defined under Article 8, Section 2(c) of the Pennsylvania Constitution. Must occupy the property as their principal dwelling. Must own the property solely jointly with spouse or as tenants by the entirety. Must demonstrate financial need as determined by the Pennsylvania State Veterans Commission. Currently, the Commission presumes financial need for applicants with an annual income of $114,637 or less. Applicants with higher income may still qualify if their allowable monthly expenses exceed their household income. Documentation is required to verify these expenses, which are assessed with an annual cost-of-living adjustment. Given the size and diversity of Pennsylvania, it has become increasingly difficult to apply a uniform standard of financial need, which has led to calls for modernization of the program. House Bill 1257 addresses this by aligning the language in the Constitution with terminology used by the VA and updating the following eligibility criteria. Number one, specifies the inclusion of veterans from Reserve Components, and in this case, Reserve Components means Reserve and National Guard, compo 2, compo 3. It clarifies the inclusion of veterans compensated at the 100% disability rate, including through individual unemployment. It extends eligibility to the unmarried surviving spouse of a service member who died in the line of duty, was taken as a prisoner of war, or declared missing in action. It allows for optional local-level exemptions for partially disabled veterans. Specifying veterans from the Reserve Components ensures that members of the National Guard and Reserve, many of whom have deployed and suffered service-connected injuries, are granted the same property tax benefit as their active-duty counterparts. Accepting veterans rated or compensated at the 100% disability rate provides statutory authority to include veterans who, while not rated as permanent and total, are still compensated at the 100% level due to the severity of their conditions. This ensures support for veterans with profound service-connected limitations. Extending eligibility to the unmarried surviving spouse of a service member who died in the line of duty, was taken or is taken as a prisoner of war, or declared missing in action, ensures that families of fallen or unaccounted-for service members are not excluded simply because the VA did not have the opportunity to assign a disability rating. This is a crucial correction to a current gap in coverage. Allowing political subdivisions, such as counties and municipalities, to grant graduated exemption to veterans rated below 100%, also introduces flexibility and empowers local governments to support veterans in their community, even if they do not meet the full criteria for the state exemption. While this provision was not specifically recommended by the Commission, we do not object to its inclusion. Collectively, these changes modernize Pennsylvania's approach to veteran support, making it more comprehensive, equitable, and reflective of the full scope of service and sacrifice. More importantly, this amendment would simplify the language in the Pennsylvania Constitution, allowing the General Assembly to adjust the other criteria through legislative action. Constitutional amendments are infrequent and take significantly longer than other typical legislative proposals, and by keeping the language straightforward, the program will remain flexible and able to adapt to future changes deemed necessary by the General Assembly. I'm proud to state for the record that these recommendations were unanimously approved by the Pennsylvania State Veterans Commission at our October 8, 2021, meeting. Furthermore, the Pennsylvania War Veterans Council has reviewed and supports this language in partnership with the Commission. While the Pennsylvania War Veterans Council did not specifically consider the local exemption provision, they do not oppose it as it does not materially alter the amendment's core intent. In conclusion, many proposals have been introduced over the years, but House Bill 1257 most closely aligns with the changes unanimously supported by both the State Veterans Commission and the Pennsylvania War Veterans Council. We believe this legislation places the needs of our veterans and their families first and strengthens the Commonwealth's legacy of honoring their service. It represents a thoughtful and necessary step towards, forward in continuing Pennsylvania's proud tradition of caring for those who have served. Years ago, Pennsylvania used to have a saying that Pennsylvania takes care of its veterans. House Bill 1257 will do just that. Thank you, Chairman Solomon. Thank you, Chairman Gillan, and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify here today, and at this time, I would be pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your testimony. We're going to hold those questions till the end. We're also joined by Representative Ingalls. Thanks for being with us. Next up is Brian Hoffman, Sullivan County Commissioner. If you want to come up and provide your testimony. Thank you. Nick, you can just stay at the table if you'd like. Yeah, sure.
Good morning, Chairman Solomon and Chairman Gillan, members of the committee and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today and for your commitment to supporting Pennsylvania's veterans. My name is Brian Hoffman, and I serve as a Commissioner in Sullivan County. I also serve as co-chair of the Emergency Management and Veterans Affairs Policy Committee for the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. Prior to becoming an elected official, I also had an Air Force career. I served 21 years of active-duty service before moving back to Pennsylvania. CCAP is a nonpartisan, nonprofit association representing all 67 counties in Pennsylvania. We appreciate the committee's focus on House Bill 1257 and the broader conversation about supporting disabled veterans and their families. Counties have a central role in administering Pennsylvania's real estate tax system. This includes conducting property valuations, maintaining assessment rules, hearing property tax appeals, administering preferential programs such as Clean &amp; Green and the Homestead Exemption, and managing tax claims and collections. Property taxes are the sole source of locally generated general fund revenue for counties. This revenue is essential for funding vital services, including human services, emergency management, courts, corrections, and elections. Counties strongly support House Bill 1257 as it advances the Commonwealth's commitment to honoring the service and sacrifice of our disabled veterans and their families. The bill proposes a constitutional amendment to expand the real estate tax exemption for disabled veterans, offering important and long overdue reforms. The changes promote greater equity and access by updating eligibility criteria to better reflect the realities of modern military service and the challenges faced by veterans today. CCAP supports several specific provisions in House Bill 1257, including these four. Number one, excluding U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs disability income from the program's financial need calculation, better aligning it with the spirit of the exemption. Number two, removing the requirement that qualifying service occurred during a war or conflict, recognizing that service-related disabilities incur in a wide range of duty contexts. Number three, extending eligibility to spouses of service members who were killed in the line of duty, are declared missing in action, or would have been declared disabled but passed away before the formal determination. Number four, preserving eligibility for veterans in long-term care facilities who still own their homes, ensuring they do not lose their exemption due to medical necessity. While we support the bill's intent, counties must also emphasize the need to preserve the statutory requirements for demonstrating financial needs. Property tax exemptions have direct physical consequences. They reduce the taxable base, meaning that the cost of local services is spread among fewer taxpayers. In some cases, this can result in a shift of the tax burden to remaining property owners. Preserving financial need as a requirement is an important safeguard to ensure exemption is targeted, sustainable, and equitable. Counties remain steadfast in our support of veterans, not only through county-based services, but also through advocacy policies that make a tangible difference in their lives. We support House Bill 1257's approach to improving the real estate tax exemption program for disabled veterans and surviving spouses. We urge continued consideration of the bill's local fiscal impacts to ensure long-term viability and fairness to all taxpayers. Thank you again to the House Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee for the opportunity to speak today. On behalf of CCAP, we are grateful for your leadership and your continued work to strengthen support for Pennsylvania's veteran community. I would be happy to answer any questions after the panel's finished.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. We're also joined by Representative Scott. Next up, we have Brian Rengert and Holly Fischel from the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, if you can both come up and provide your testimony. Is your mic on? Thanks.
Thank you. Chairman Solomon, Chairman Gillan, and members of the committee, thank you for inviting PSATS to present remarks on behalf of the 1,453 townships represented by our association. PSATS is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization committed to preserving and strengthening township government, securing greater visibility and involvement for townships in the state and federal political arenas. PSATS and its member townships are supportive of our veterans. Many veterans, many townships have parks and recognitions of our veterans, memorials for veterans, and some maintain cemeteries where veterans are buried. As written, House Bill 1257 would amend the Pennsylvania Constitution to, among other things, provide townships with the voluntary option to recognize veterans through property tax exemptions. We support increasing benefits for our veterans as outlined in this legislation. We do have several questions about this new proposal that we hope can be clarified to ensure a smooth transition should the legislature decide to move forward with these changes. As mentioned previously, under existing law, 100% disabled veterans are exempt from property taxes if their income is below a certain threshold. The State Veterans Commission currently notifies townships and the county assessment office when a disabled veteran qualifies for this exemption and the property is then exempted. Under the proposed language referenced to the State Veterans Commission would be removed from the Constitution. Is the intention for the Commission to continue to certify that a veteran is eligible for this benefit through statute? Under current law, a 100% disabled veteran is eligible for this benefit based both on disability status and income eligibility. The Commission certifies eligible veterans for tax exemption based on both criteria. The proposed language deletes any reference to income eligibility. Is the intent to create a separate statutory process for determining need or to eliminate all income eligibility criteria? If the intent is for income eligibility to continue to be a component, we suggest that the proposed language be clarified, at least reference that, the General Assembly's process that will develop that process to set that criteria. The new language would expand the existing tax exemption to the unmarried surviving spouse of service members died in the line of duty, are taken as prisoners of war, or declared missing in action. As written, is this intended to be an expansion of the veteran's benefit across the board, or is it for the optional political subdivision language or for both? As it's currently placed after the political subdivision option and the cosponsorship memos indicates that it would be part of the statewide program, we suggest that the language be clarified by placing the optional language at the end or in a different paragraph. For the new optional provision for political subdivisions, will the Commission provide assistance with information about the eligible veterans in their communities for townships that are interested in implementing this provision? Has a fiscal note been prepared for this proposal to help us better determine the impact on our members so they can budget accordingly? Townships have limited ability to raise revenue under current law and would need to offset the expansion with other revenues, most likely a small property tax increase. We encourage the legislature to consider offsetting the impact of this program with state funds and to provide local governments with more flexible revenue options. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input on this proposed constitutional amendment on behalf of our member township.
Thank you, Holly. Brian, are you providing any testimony?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Ron Grotz, Senior Director of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs.
Good morning, Chairman Solomon, Chairman Gillan, and members of the House Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee. My name is Ron Grotz. I'm Senior Director for the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. Very happy to be here today to testify on behalf of the Association on the topic of expanding property tax exemptions for disabled veterans. Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs is a statewide, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization dedicated to serving the 955 borough communities throughout Pennsylvania. We've been around since 1911, and we serve our members through various ways: legislative advocacy, legal research, education, training, and other services. I'm very thankful to be here to let you know our thoughts on House Bill 1257 and provide a local government perspective. You've heard about the, already about the particulars of House Bill 1257, and I won't get into that, but just want to mention that, of course, that the bill guarantees certain benefits for tax exemptions and expanding it to include surviving spouses and, of course, going from the, a combat veteran to just a veteran who's 100% disabled. According to the Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, there is approximately 22,000 veterans receiving this property tax exemption. Currently, it's estimated this year to be, those 22,000 veterans receiving those tax exemptions will represent this year $74.8 million. PSEB is grateful to Representative Probst's effort to correct the loopholes that are in current law that prevent disabled veterans who did not serve in combat from in current law that prevent disabled veterans who did not serve in combat from receiving the real estate tax exemption. PSAB has made every effort to support veterans and their contributions to our nation in multiple forms. In fact, the theme of our annual conference this year, which will be happening in a few weeks in Hershey, is Hometown Heroes, honoring our brave veterans who serve their boroughs in a multitude of ways. We will be displaying Hometown Hero flags that are displayed in our downtown boroughs to honor veterans from across the Commonwealth. PSAB is also proud to mention that our current president, Tom Weichel, from Royersford Borough, Montgomery County, is a proud Navy veteran. Boroughs across the Commonwealth are already taking advantage of flexibility in the Borough Code to assist military and veterans organizations across the Commonwealth. Section 29A of the Borough Code gives a Borough Council the ability to appropriate Borough funds to support the maintenance and discipline and training of a unit of the Pennsylvania National Guard. The Borough Code also gives boroughs explicit authority under Section 1202 to contribute to holiday celebrations in their communities. Many of our boroughs take advantage of that by donating to parades for Memorial Day and Veterans Day. This legislation would enable boroughs to further support veterans in their communities by providing the option of real estate tax exemptions for veterans who may not be fully disabled. PSAB appreciates that this legislation does not mandate that from the state government, but provides another option for communities that choose to enact such a benefit. And we support that option to let each local government decide what works best for their community. Boroughs currently use the flexibility and the authorization that was given to them in Act 172 of 2016 and subsequent amendments in Title 35 to provide real estate tax exemptions and earned income tax exemptions to volunteer fire companies and, I'm sorry, volunteers of fire companies and nonprofit EMS agencies to retain, to recruit and retain these critical volunteers in their community. While these, there is a fiscal impact on each borough, many of our members still opt to offer these same benefits to volunteer firefighters and EMS personnel in their communities. We believe that our members will recognize the potential fiscal impacts of expanding the property tax exemptions on their communities and make the best decision for their borough. PSAB is supportive of House Bill 1257. However, we do have a few practical questions regarding the implementation of the expansion of exemptions by local governments. First, would the General Assembly be willing to provide funding to local governments enacting additional property tax exemptions to incentivize additional property tax exemptions for veterans? So, you know, going back to the option to go below 100% disabled, certainly some type of state funding to incentivize more local governments to provide that, I think, would be helpful. Secondly, would the General Assembly be willing to provide additional revenue streams for municipal governments to offset the loss of revenue that local governments would incur as a result of expanding the tax exemptions to veterans who are not fully disabled? For example, raising the maximum caps on earned income tax or property taxes and the local services tax, or enabling a local sales tax, which would give local governments more fiscal flexibility to enact benefits in House Bill 1257 for veterans in their communities. We do have in law an optional elimination of the occupation tax, which provides for a little bit higher earned income tax rate, but it has to be revenue neutral. So if this constitutional amendment were to pass, perhaps in enabling legislation, you could give us some type of offset where we could get a little bit higher rate on some other tax if we do provide for a little bit more generous exemption for disabled veterans. So in closing, I want to thank Chairman Solomon for giving PSAB the invitation to have a seat at the table in discussing House Bill 1257. We're very happy to support Representative Probst's proposal to provide more fiscal relief to disabled veterans across the Commonwealth. I'm very happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments from the committee? Representative Takek joins us. Thank you. You got something? Rep. Webster.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I guess just the quick, obvious question. Let me step back and just say to Mr. Hoffman, I wanted to say thanks for your 20 years of duty served in the U.S. Air Force. I appreciate that personally. And just curious if the panel or the maker of the bill can talk about how many veterans this will affect, because I think that's something we should celebrate. We ought to know that number and be able to say we're doing a good thing for those
Representative Webster, Nick Taylor from the State Veterans Commission. So right now, I have some figures in front of me, and these figures are just a little dated, but as of 21 March, there was just under 22,000 veterans within the Commonwealth that are taking advantage of the 100% real estate tax exemption because of their disability. And what that translates to is if you take the number of veterans in Pennsylvania, which is just over 600,000, the figure that I was using was 638,000, if you divide that out by the 23,000, it's just a little over 3% of all veterans that are 100% disabled and in the program right now. We do anticipate that, according to the average, will show an increase of about maybe 1,400 per year. I hope that answers your question, sir.
It does, and obviously, we could speculate how many might be in a particular borough or county, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Other members of the committee? Representative Gens.
You all for being here today. It's much appreciated. As a former mayor in a borough of 8,000 people, we had one, 100%. So I appreciate you asking for Harrisburg to have to cover that bill. Okay? I don't agree with that, because I'm sure that your borough can afford it, when most of them may have won.
Thank you, Representative. Other comments, questions from the committee? Chairman Gillen, you have anything?
Thank you, Representative Probst. I appreciate you taking the initiative on that. I think the updates are, too. Grateful for all the testifiers. I was driving back from the gym this morning, and my daughter was going the other way. She got up a little bit later than she normally does, a long week. She commissioned as a second lieutenant this past Friday, completed ROTC programs. Driving back from South Carolina, I said, normally, she's like 4 o'clock in the morning type person. I beat her to the gym, and I said, what's going on here? It's a second shift. How does that tie into what we're discussing today? Because it kind of amplifies it, you know, somewhere down the highway, she could be on the field of combat, she could be facing a disability. So I think this is an important discussion. My dad was a World War II aviator, and looking at the plethora of what a 100% disability is, I think he really would have qualified and probably could have benefited from the program. But for Nick, Brian, and Holly, and Ron, there was a couple phrases that came up in terms of loss of revenue. I'm going to always be asking fiduciary responsibility questions, and I think it's important to do that, to get them out of the way, let's understand what we're talking about. We talked about the state backfilling some dollars, municipal budgets, I think, came up in the testimony, and offsetting the expansion. I know it's difficult to quantify, but there is a financial component to this. And so could you expand a little bit on the remarks that each of you made relative to the financial component of this? The number one issue in our district is property tax. And so we certainly want to be sensitive to all property taxpayers, including veterans that are not disabled. So could you address the issue? Are we talking something that's de minimis? Could you foresee down the highway an expansion that's larger financially? Just again, if you'll allumin on the comments that each of you made relative to fiduciary responsibility, I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I can try to answer that. I mean, I think it's hard to say what the cost would be, and I think it's, you know, I think it's a cost that many of our members would be willing to make. Our comment was really, you know, municipalities are pretty much, very much limited to property taxes as a source of revenue. So, you know, just the comment that perhaps looking at, you know, other opportunities for municipalities, you know, on a larger scale was really our point. I think individual municipalities will be able to make their decisions of what works best for them in terms of implementing this.
Yeah, and to what my testimony provided, you know, we're just looking for options locally. You know, it's really tough to pinpoint, you know, how many, how it's going to affect each 955 boroughs, but I think if there are those options there locally, you know, to either absorb it, you know, if you have one, or, you know, if you take the scale of 100% disabled and you look at it, and maybe you're looking at making it 50% for your borough. Okay, well, how is that gonna? It's really difficult to quantify what that is, but if, maybe if you could have like a local option, maybe a swap on a tax that you could help to pay for it. That's all that our membership's looking for.
So in my testimony, C cap is not advocating for state funds to backfill. I just wanted to point that out, though I did hear it from some of my counter. So now, as, being a commissioner from one of 67 counties, I'm going to give my C cap remarks or answer first. We're aware that shifting, when you give exemptions within assessed value, which happens, we always recognize as commissioners that you're simply reallocating that burden to someone else. And I will say that our citizens have never complained about the current exemption for 100% disabled veterans. So what we're really, I think what your committee is looking for, for some feedback, is, you know, would you entertain this? What's the purpose of it? And I just want to say that whatever the standard ends up being, if the standard is readjusted, it's very important, I think, and those that have been in the military understand that a standard needs to be manageable and it needs to serve the purpose, and we should always keep our eye on the intent. Now, since I have the opportunity to answer this question, I'm going to speak as Brian from Sullivan County, not wearing C cap's hat. I don't know that I individually am a fan of extending this exemption below 100%. I'm not against it, but if you do that, then where are you setting the mark? Administratively, as a county commissioner who plays a role in granting exceptions, I'm very familiar with our assessment office and the different levels of processing and exemptions. So if this were to become reality, I look forward to how, what internal procedures we're going to be setting up. My second thought while I was listening to the Borough and Township Association speak is that, at least in my county, the county government are the ones granting these exemptions, and these exemptions show up on a tax bill. So the potential of municipalities granting these exemptions individually, similar to what you mentioned with the fire and EMS tax rebates, we at Sullivan County or a government, if this became reality, we would have to come up with some procedures, and actually, the boroughs and townships would have to be giving direct feedback back to our assessment office, which is the office who's preparing real estate tax bills on an annual basis. So adjusting the 100, below 100%, certainly, I'm not, just, I'm already thinking down the road, if that becomes reality, you're rolling in a whole bunch of extra administrative uniquenesses. Certain boroughs could do it, some townships will do it, others won't. And then you start talking about the 67 counties across the Commonwealth, which counties are going to do it, which ones wouldn't. Now, granted, we'd like to have the ability to do things that suit our local government, believe me, and that I could say very safely from a C cap hat. But I don't know if that's what the answer that you were looking for, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, just a brief follow-up. I realize time is sensitive here. So you indicated you are not a fan of below 100% threshold in terms of the disability. So I'm trying to figure, is this an administrative concern, a financial concern, practical concern, or all the above? Because let's take a 10% rating, which, under the VA, is a minimal impact on daily life. Could you just elasticize on your comment? Let's bring it to 10%. Is this something administratively you could work with practically, or you have other concerns financially?
10, 20 through 90%, whatever it is, it's going to, it's going to need some administrative oversight, which I'm sure we'd be capable of doing, and if necessary, if the choice was made. I'm a 20% disabled veteran. I don't perceive myself as not being able to serve a purpose within my society that's compensated. Now, I'm not 80, I'm not 90, I'm not, I'm not in a position to give a general statement as to how low I would go, but standards are nice when they're manageable, and they're enforceable, and they're simple. That's where I would, that's my answer to that.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your candor.
Mr. Taylor, you had something, and then Representative Probst.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. From the Veterans Commission's standpoint, our position is kind of neutral on the subdivisions. I think it just basically comes to a decision from that subdivision or county, can they afford, and what is the associated, you know, tasks with that? So right now, the Veterans Commission, we are neutral on that, because the language that's introduced in the bill does not say will or shall, it says can or may. Of course, leaves that up to the option of the municipality.
Representative Probst.
It is a really good question. Like I said, as a former mayor of a county seat of Monroe, I always said you can't swing a dead cat without hitting a tax-exempt building, right? So I know what it's like to be in a little bit of financial struggles like that. I don't know if you recall, but two years ago, I was in front of this committee for House Bill, I can't even believe I remember the number, 1522, and it was, you know, if you're 50% disabled, you should get a 50% tax exempt. And everybody liked it, but the question was, we can't afford it. Like, it's, and I really do understand that. I might not like it, but I can understand, to be responsible with your money, how are we going to do this? That's why I really like this bill, because this bill is basically, it talks more about being 100% disabled in non-war times. It talks more about the spouses of 100% disabled or missing in action, or, you know, it's, I think that we're not really looking at the 40, 50, 60% disabled, even though I'd really like to. I want to put something forth that we can actually get done. And to be able to expand the disability criteria to the spouses and to those that did not serve in combat is really the overall goal. And on top of it, when you think about the things that we're already trying to do, right? We're trying to fund schools, and we were year one of seven, hopefully. That's going to lower property taxes for many, the Poconos, I mean, we're the worst-funded school districts in the Commonwealth, all four of them, fact. Number 500, 499, 498, and 497, that's the biggest bulk of our bill. Number 500, 499, 498, and 497, that's the biggest bulk of our bill in Monroe County. So with things coming down, like school taxes, and, and they will if we keep doing the right thing in Pennsylvania, I just feel that the number of people that this is going to expand to is not going to be life-threatening to municipalities. And if it is, they have the option not to do it. We all like local government control. We all like to say, we like to have our own government, you know, councils that make that decision. That's why you have local elections. If they can't do it, then they're not going to. Maybe some of them can only do a little bit. Maybe some of them can say, well, we're going to do all of it because, you know, because of X, Y, and Z. So it gives each municipality the flexibility to do what they can, and if they want, I mean, they may want to, but they can't afford it. But then maybe in a couple of years, they can offer some sort of, you know, help to these veterans who are disabled. So I think the focus isn't on the 10, 20, 30, 40% disabled, because that bill didn't go anywhere of mine. This is just for an expansion of 100, really 100% disability on non-war time, non-combat, and the spouses. So I do appreciate the question. If we keep funding Pennsylvania, and, and by the way, Rep. Freeman has a bill that's probably going to come out of committee to give municipalities who have more than 15% of tax-exempt properties availability to go ahead and apply for grants to get some of that money back. So municipalities, I'm in that state and local government, and I can tell you that we're already trying to help municipalities more than we, than I feel we ever have before. So I'd just like to help develop veterans, too, while we're at it.
Thank you, Representative Probst. I realize you were mayor of a borough. I was a mere borough councilman, so we get it in terms of trying to keep the budget together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate you bringing this hearing forward.
Thank you so much, Chairman Gillan. I really appreciate the testimony of everyone here, appreciate the participation of the members. This hearing is now adjourned. Thank you so much.